Uh, no, well, she's been.
Good morning, yeah.
Apparently, we're trying to find the work that she managed to handle.
Oh, my God.
So she said she would try to do it, but she may find that there's a penalty for it. But I just came up with some. Okay, well, let's call me order. Um, we have the form in six minutes here. Um, I don't see anything from. Yeah.
No, you don't have a mic on your. So Jen, can you hear okay?
Um.
Mr.
Oh, I can hear you really well because you're dialed into the compute into the call, I think. So your microphone is picking you up. I can hear Johnny.
My sound off.
So.
Yeah, so did you hear Johnny?
I can, I can hear her medium.
Okay.
Yeah. That might not back.
It's the mic on that computer.
Okay. Well, um. So I'll try to talk louder. Can you hear me?
That's perfect. That's perfect, Johnny. Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe just like point you.
Yeah. Use your theater voice.
Is there an exercise for that? Okay, so the first thing on our agenda then is approval of the minutes of June sixth, June thirteenth, June twentieth and June twenty seventh. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. For June, I believe it's thirteenth, we were referring to the Employers Council as Mountain State Employers Council, which I believe is how David talked about it. Um, but because there's some sensitivity to that Mountain States nomenclature, can we just change it to Employers Council, which is their official name now? Would that be possible or is that not accurate? Because that's not actually how it was spoken about in the minutes?
That, that change can certainly be made.
Okay. If it, if no one objects to that, I know there's just some
Thanks.
sensitivity to the name there. Um, the other question I had was on page thirteen, I think again on the June thirteenth notes. It said that the dollar value for accumulated sick leave was two hundred million dollars. I, I think that might be a typo. It's not two hundred million. It's like two million or twenty million, David, or?
No, uh, sickly, I didn't look at the sickly is approximately three or no, that's vacation. Vacation is about three hundred. I think sick is probably around six hundred or seven hundred.
Million dollars?
No, seven hundred thousand dollars.
It says, I think it says, I think there's like, it just says twenty, two hundred million dollars on that, like two hu- two hundred and then six zeros, I believe on page thirteen of the notes.
I think it's like seven hundred thousand. Uh, is my guess, but I have to go back and look.
Oh, I'm sure that's what you said. The, just the notes say reflect to a two hundred million dollar li- like possible liability, which seemed like maybe just a typo. Or am I, I, I have some, some note that has it two hundred million is a number that I saw in the notes. I'll fi- I'll find it. I'll find it again, but it was definitely something I thought I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know if someone was just like in jest. Yes, the note, Marissa said, yeah, the notes do have two hundred million, so they need to be changed. Thank you, Marissa. Um, for making me feel not crazy.
Yeah, I remember typing those numbers out and being like, oh.
That's a big number. Yeah.
Uh, my apologies about that.
No, don't apologize. I just wanted to, we didn't record that.
And I have one change to the minutes of June twenty seventh. So page twenty one, the last sentence. Um. Okay. Um, which should say the Boulder Library Foundation's non-profit status instead of those meat tab structure. Should be the Boulder Library Foundation's non-profit status. Any other changes? Okay, and we have a motion to clear the alternative of four, six minutes and comment. So we move. Well, second. Do seconds. Uh, there's the favor. Next pass unanimously. Okay, David, you want to talk to us about Kara?
Karen, okay.
Uh, whichever order you want to do.
Let's do the financial law first.
Okay.
And then you guys have a reservation. You will tell the good for Kara. So, uh, first of all, I want to do the, um, the financial model, which, uh, I've not had a chance really to review really with the financial subcommittee yet, but I appreciate your request and and honestly, so Johnny sent a request on Friday for the model to reflect, um, delivering on the ballot promises for twenty four and twenty five and working to complete the master plan of my twenty twenty six. Assume the staffing and payment package at high end of the range and looking at and then for sip or facilities, some direct requests for capital maintenance around, uh, the coming group report. So it called for, uh, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in expenses the first year plus one and a half million spread out over the next two to five. Uh, and then for preventative maintenance, an additional amount of money and some money for ongoing maintenance. Uh, and for reimbursement to the city in the amount thirteen million. So this is actually a really timely and good request because the model is coming together quite nicely. Uh, we are, uh, I think probably ninety nine percent of the data that's in it is currently accurate and reflects what things will cost. Uh, there are a lot of assumptions and the hardest part of putting together this model is not knowing what the open state would be, because what Jennifer and I have been doing is tracking every single cost. Uh, they both is what the city is doing and what the district is doing as a single sum of expenditures for the district this year. So if you agree to a simple dollar amount for the city based upon what their calculations are, we can actually request that amount as a debt in the opening statement. We only have to have calculated the initial cost that we have. And so I did a, a very simple spreadsheet, um, to reflect that. Uh, and I want to show you that before we get into the model. So and, and you're in fine shape. Yeah.
Just wanted to add one other thing. So the context of this, you're lifting up the payback schedule for the city. Um, how would that affect our cash flow? Do you pay that three years, four years?
So a lot of that expense from the interest they're asking for on that, um, debt. So you have to have two million dollars debt and they want whatever four percent, add half a million to it, and then we would pay that out in the course of four or five years. That's fine, um, too. I don't show that in this simplified version. It doesn't show all of the nuance that you'll see in the full model has been removed. There is no interest on investments. There's no interest in paying on debt. It's just a straight, simple line of what your revenues are. What the carryover, uh, from the previous year's balance would be. Plus then, so then the total available funds for that current year and then the expenses that you would have, uh, as we imagine. So as you can see, in twenty twenty three, our total revenue we anticipate is around seventeen point seven million dollars. We anticipate expenses, the expenses being for legal services for the consultants, like coming through the back of stuff, plus all the hardware and software that you need to be ready to go on January one at about one and a half million dollars. And then you can see over here debt repayment to the city is thirteen million dollars. So at the end of the year balance, we'd luckily have sixteen million. It carries over to here. In twenty twenty four, we anticipate that our revenue, uh, for that year will be at approximately nineteen point eight million dollars. At that end, so we have roughly thirty seven billion dollars, thirty six million dollars to spend in twenty twenty four. Eighteen million dollars is approximately the expense for all of the things. That's a major ramp up from where we are now. That would be Carnegie opening in the first quarter, Novo opening in the second quarter, third quarter, you start rolling out whatever the things are on, um, the, the canned theater, uh, hours are restored probably beginning in the first quarter. So all of the major things that are going to be happening will be happening in the course of that first year. Plus, we plan to populate the general reserve fund and the capital reserve fund at the amounts shown here. Currently, it's three and a half and two and a half. Those numbers are somewhat punchable. Ultimately, you will have to tell us what you want the general, uh, reserve fund, what percentage you are actually aiming for. We're required by law to carry three percent. I think best practices somewhere between ten and fifteen. And as when you look at the model, we, we say within fifteen, fifteen percent for the upcoming fifteen years. Uh, so then you see that three million dollars in the initial year in terms of debt repayment. Um, capital expense to address facility backlog, possibly a million. Uh, we have then also other capital expenses. There's something to be brought to you yet, but obviously we're adding thirty some people to the staff. There's going to be something in configuration that's going to be required. Uh, that's something we'll bring to you in your twenty twenty four budget. And then we actually even went ahead and speculated because that's what I've been doing with the models. Speculating on gun barrel, whether it makes sense for us to finance the purchase of a building in twenty twenty four with the intent of opening that in twenty twenty five while pursuing lease. So lease, obviously, in the short run, is a little less money. We could do that either way. Uh, purchasing the building outright with the size that we have in mind, uh, could be something that finance can be made with it. Uh, building costs don't go down. The commercial market is pretty flat right now. It might be, but that's something that you would not consider in the course of. So as you can see, that just carries over each year to each year. Uh, what you will see in this model is um, we are able to finance the facilities, uh, to the tune of three million over the course of uh, five years, which gets us out in front of the median and short term uh, goals, which I think total budget will be about two point five million for all three buildings. So we're out in front of that a little bit, um, by twenty twenty nine. Um, at which point then? Yeah, I'm just, it was in the coming report as well as, uh, the, um, you know, the ongoing maintenance. So the ongoing maintenance we currently are budgeting, you'll see that in the full model. We're budgeting a million dollars annually, building and grounds, ongoing maintenance now. Those are just placeholders for right now. We've estimated the amount for buildings higher than what I think it probably is going to turn out to be, I for, for, um, um, that's the grounds significantly higher than what you've got. We've not seen any yes. We don't have any dollar amounts other than a speculative number that was tossed out there in the year back, which I think can mend around three million twenty thousand dollars a day. When that was with the assumption around the main library, which was never cleared in you. So I don't think that was exactly what I'm. There are twenty thousand dollars for all buildings of uh, some, some level of control and a percentage of property maintenance. So as you can see, then, again, in Meadows, the lease here expires in twenty thirty. Uh, this model, this little temporary thing shows like I do with a larger model, speculating on financing the purchase of a building. Um, but again, you can always leasing the space. Uh, this lease here is currently free with exception cap, camp, you can just accommodate. And so you'll see like by twenty twenty nine, we dip on the operating expenses down below, uh, the red by about half a million dollars, but we still have not tapped into these original amounts that we budgeted here for general reserve fund and your capital reserve fund. So you could say you wind up even with the capital reserve fund that they're in two months. And we would be at the end of that time, twenty thirty, we would be roughly even having paid off the debt. Then in advance of the maintenance background that we intend to address, we get, we get to, um, we'll see in the larger model, we get to six million pretty soon afterwards, the total amount that they have in the vengeance, uh, that one entirely, including long-term maintenance, things I think totals out somewhere in nine minutes. So we would be in good shape and that, that's good. So, uh, this is a very simplified kind of version, but I wanted to show you that we're in good shape.
What is this, a five-year payment?
This assumes a five-year payment. It doesn't. So where, where it would change is the terms that we agreed. So if they have interest on the if they want interest on it, one, I personally think it's like not moving that way. So maybe in our best interest to shorten the loan, if I, I'm not calculating the interest in this model. And so doing it in this manner, I can change to three years or five years. It doesn't change the outcome. We still end up at that, 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 that. But we don't arrive there any sooner than we do. I think we don't, I think we don't get there until twenty twenty nine.
So I'm sorry, I lost my idea. So assuming that the maintenance is something, but then the thing that after three years, that reduces our cash flow somewhat, right?
Yeah.
Because you're that much out there.
Yeah.
Someone a little bit closer to the computer, just repeat Johnny's question.
Three of them, what's turning up in G A?
Oops.
One of them.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty. Say five, okay. Well. That's right. It's calculating based on.
Yeah. It, so the negative does carry to us in twenty twenty seven. Uh, so obviously you can pull that from our reserve fund sooner to make it balance out. So we're not, so these values will be up that day. But I think in the end, we want it. You know, roughly, but the dollar amounts, it would be easier for us and we would look for surprise. It's possible. And then as we understand in bank, depending upon what the city is charging us interest. By having that money with June and March, you may even move it down so out there, earnings on it, that excess that sixteen million spread out. We'll be able to earn up to a ten and a half percent. Hold these with the bank class that don't have a, uh, immediate place. So we'll have all these in the bank. The Navy Law says that it's going to cost to us if we back your interest. A lot less than.
And expense time item, I'm curious, like for the personnel cost, but if it's staffing, so how would you, when what, what number do you use for staffing, like just what you project out, which are anticipating, that will be with, with maybe those proposed changes in salary that we're in this furniture program.
Yeah, and we can show you the
Yeah.
whole model, like where we're coming from.
I was.
I rounded all the numbers off for your save your both the revenues and expenses, but the, uh, the whole model, if you already enjoy this, just simple explanation that we can do it. Um, so this, um.
Not quite. So just don't want to start with, I mean, this is just partly trying to articulate the discussion. And then there's, but I'm taking away from this. Yeah, we can do it. Do it, we, we deliver on the ballot measure that we master plan by twenty twenty seven and we will go down, but it's tight. We certainly are in better shape than when we were involved to the public, we have a longer repayment where we're going to sustain third marriage. So due to that.
Or even a little.
No interest.
No.
But never mentioned. Is it common?
What?
It's on, in, when you see another maintenance, but. No, it's.
No, if everything that.
So it's not an issue. Okay.
But still, it was just a piece.
Wait.
Right. So I understand the reserves, um, to three percent, but if you take the reserve, that's the law, but we're going to twenty percent.
Uh, now the model, in the model, it's, it's, it's fluid at this point. You have to tell us what you want. And so right now in the model, we, we hover between, uh, fifteen, sixty percent down to eleven, seven percent for generals. That, that's just, that's how the model shows it. But in the end, well, you'll see in the simple model, there is, there is cash carryover in some cases, which, uh, we'll just bring into a other reserve at this point, because you need to establish a policy. What do you want? You say it's fifty percent. They'll always have fifty.
Did you say something like fifteen is best practice instead of what amongst library districts or amongst? Our district, they're all over the board. Yeah. It's among that twenty, twenty five percent.
What's the city's? Twenty, twenty.
Yeah, I can say they're contacted.
But remember the city and salesmen.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you and I had a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago, the, the the sales tax, it goes down very quickly. With property tax, if it goes down, you've got some time and plans. So the reserve situation is a little different.
That's why I was going, because the district, it's only a bit six percent. You know, three percent paper and three percent of our own, because of our property back. I'll get it with sales tax, but so I'm just not saying go lower, but I just wanted to understand that better.
Don't you normally do a research, like if you have to, or if you're starting at the school board or like just to determine what your profit, like, I want to go away. We've done a reserve study. And the study kind of basically says, you should say, based on whatever usage that your reserves that didn't help, it would, you know, they came up with a number, um, that's, I don't, not to like pay another consultant to do another thing, but through the future, we put that, you know, on a board. Numbers could be based on such practices, like, you know, consulting, dealing with our, you know.
Yeah, I think it's, that it's something that you're going to have to work with. I don't kind of read the things.
Yeah.
I'm probably looking at, but, um, your property tax. We, we, we need to know exactly whatever the doctor that we released on, and it's all these insurance coming along. And then probably if we don't have three percent, you know, when our debt deducts all. Right. So you may decide you feel more comfortable carrying three months' expenses, if you have a back-up situation for it. I think it really is going to, it's coming back to, what are you? Right, Jennifer. When, when you guys tell us what that number is, we can plug it into the model. I, I, it would be four if you go over twenty percent. Um, but, you know, I, I wouldn't, I would twice be said. You know, fifteen, um, right, so. Like, we don't make it. You'll see it tomorrow, but you don't make it every time. I'm not sure if my screen is not going at this point.
So will this be a discussion that's part of the twenty twenty four budget, David, or is this accepted?
No, it'll be a part of the twenty twenty four budget. I'll ask if you can set us, uh, for us, the reserve amount that you want.
So the budget and finance, could we, we'll be making a recommendation for us on this and other things, right?
Yeah. And so what you may decide to do is set it not lower than you're starting out with, say you started at ten percent. Then we would probably, well, the remainder of that money comes to capital reserve funds, which may enable us to accelerate the plan and bring you to see what you currently have uh, with regards to, um, addressing the subs, that. So now I want this. This. That's.
But Jen, were you able to follow that? Should we try and shout a summary for you?
Um, a, a summary would be, I was able to follow a, a little bit, um, around some of the levers we can pull in the model to change the projections. Um, I guess my question is, um, are we limited to, and someone may have asked this, forgive me, uh, the audio is not amazing, um, is, are we limited to a five-year payback period with the city? Is that, is that something, is that an assumption we're working under? Like, uh, like as a maximum?
We, no, we, so this, this is a question that I would
Okay.
based on what's in the I G A. Right now, the I G A has a three-year payback.
Three.
Um, and I was just curious about what the implications were if we asked it for, asked for a longer payback period. Um, you know, the, the
Okay.
maintenance backlog, we are assuming, and that puts a big load on our budget, and that's kind of where my brain was going and saying
Okay.
get some grace and paying it back longer since we're picking up the load for this. Don't know how to respond to that. Um, Chris Ness, when I had talked to him some months ago, had said he wants to make sure that the district's solvent. And I think they want to make sure we can deliver on our services. So I just wanted us to be ready for that conversation when we give them uh, on the sixteen. We can talk about it to know and getting your executive session tonight.
Okay, okay.
Just, just for your comfort purposes, right? So we show a sixteen million dollar carryover from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. And the, the reserves that we're putting in, both for general reserve and the capital reserve, may be way higher than for a three percent reserve. What we're required to carry by law is, I think, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that still leaves out of the if we paid the city back entirely, we would have three million dollars, five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars of which had to go to the general reserve. That still leaves three million dollars to go into capital. And if you're comfortable with three percent, then you can pay them back January first. If that's, if that's your, the model, the model will work out just fine. Um, so you can pay them there for you.
Um, Ricky's had an emotional point, like if we paid you all at once, we'd pay less.
The thirteen, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Like if they need them, is that dumb?
Let's talk about that in the executive session, yeah.
All right. So, um, I don't want to spend a really long time with this model because as I said, the opening statement at this point is moot because we've changed, uh, some of the assumptions by shifting to an idea where we have starting out with debt. So I'm going to, you know, the first year we are doing month by month, which you're absolutely not interested in seeing, but, uh, so what I want to show you just is, um, really from fiscal year twenty twenty four on. So currently we're anticipating, because we don't know, uh, about a twelve point two percent increase in assessed value. I don't know what you're hearing. I know my assessed value, uh, was thirty nine percent. I did not challenge it. Um, the governor has, uh, proposition H H, which would bring down problem taxes somewhat in capital, but it doesn't take it away entirely. Uh, you will have the opportunity as a district to opt out of any of those sort of reductions. So that'll be a decision that you'll need to make. Maybe prudent at first year to just opt out of it. I know that that will be something you want to discuss. Uh, so at present, then, what we show at a twelve point two percent, this is the total value of commercial and residential real estate in, uh, the, the parameters district. Um, and so if we go down here, uh, you'll begin to see how we are estimating both non-personnel expense increases. So some of these increases around administrative services, obviously there's a massive increase. That's because we're bringing in H R, finance, payroll, a bunch of different software products. We're increasing the substitute budget. Some other departments increased by less. See collection development, where we buy books goes up about twenty eight percent. Communications and marketing, their cost go up by nearly two hundred percent in the first year. That's on the, on the concept that we will be putting on our, for master plan communications and also giving them a budget to actually begin implementing that plan in the course of twenty twenty four. Um, there are a whole bunch of other elements here that which factor into the overall model. Um, so it gets more interesting as we go down further. Uh, it costs out everything, um, interest on investments. This whole, this whole section here is a form through which we can calculate the cost of financing the purchase of buildings and or leasing of them. Uh, it's based on the square footage cost, which is current cost. Obviously, we can adjust that if we go forward, um, the cost of issuing debt. Um, and payments. Um, but then we get come back down to something that's going to look more like what we're going to see in terms of the budget. And so the revenue based on that twelve point two percent increase for twenty twenty four and taxes alone is nineteen point six million dollars. We overall budget once all the revenue is considered, uh, nineteen point nine, so roughly twenty million dollars. And then it details the operating expenses for each of these different departments, um, and we can break this out. We have broken it out in a in the dashboard, which I'm not entirely comfortable showing you at this time, because mostly what I did was I mirrored how the city shows city council, the budget and the public budget, and I don't know if that's what you want, but that's kind of what we have here. Um, as you can see, as you go down to the model, um, there is cost associated with expenditures around uh, capital expenses, both for backlog and for things that are needed. There's a whole tracker in the model for that, which is CapEx, which you can enter in the dates, uh, through which this cost is going to come. Um, the time of the anticipated life, so the capital depreciation, what the actual cost of those are. And if you can see here for six and a half million dollars programmed in that time in terms of additional capital costs. Uh, there, here's another capital cost associated with refurbishing gun barrel. Another cost associated with refurbishing main library to accommodate all the new staff. In any case, how this works out, um, is that obviously, uh, at the end of the year, um, once all expenses paid, um, we come in. We come in, again, we have the reserve, in this case, showing a capital reserve of one and a half. The general reserve, three million, but basically three million, three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, which is not going to help. And so that money will go either into the next year's receipts or begin to populate one of those reserve accounts. Um, and our ending cash balance, and you'll see this here. And so that, if you want to carry it out through twenty thirty nine, uh, you'll see that with all of those expectations, a fairly aggressive. And so that, if you want to carry it out through twenty thirty-nine, uh, you'll see that with all of those expectations, a fairly aggressive. Approach towards, uh, addressing the maintenance issues. We do wind up mostly. In the red, in the final year, which is fifteen years from now, um, by two million dollars in the operational balance sheet. But I want to draw your attention to, um. The total net assets, you'll see that we still have that exact amount of money in cash that's not been expended that year. And we still have not drawn significantly from either the capital reserve or the general to pay for in. Those monies remain stable throughout time, and maybe got a slight amount from the greater time. So in other words, we're in really good shape. And then. I don't know if anybody else, I shared mine. I don't know what you all are hearing about. The assessment rate, but one of the biggest presumptions that we made from this entire model is a very conservative. And so that, uh, conservative one is based on the fifty-year. Average assessment rate on all of the town. And so that assessment rate comes in, when you look at a fifty-year average. Well, when you looked at a fifty-year average in twenty eighteen, it was about four percent teetering towards five. For the last ten years, so for the last five assessments, it has been ten, fourteen, ten, six. And then this year, probably twelve to twenty, we don't know, we'll know, we'll know by the end of August. So it's averaging well over ten percent. And so I just wanna, for the sake of like showing you, now you've seen all this detail that's gone into the thing. How much of it is really mostly just funding, right? So, um, if we assume. After this year, so let's say twelve point two states. Uh, and let's say this number for twenty twenty-six, the twenty twenty-five is the next given time for assessment. Let's say it's eight percent. Whoops. Let's say it's eight percent. Now, that's a small change, which is probably not unreasonable, it's actually made. Uh, if you go down. Now, keep in mind, this is with an aggressive strategy to address the backlog, as well as purchasing buildings in Meadows and in Gun Barrel. We'll see. Where in the, we have round sheet, looks something. We are, instead of being two million dollars in the head, we're a temporary. That's with a three percent adjustment, or three point one percent adjustment to the assessment. Now, it's also interesting, you go back and play with the model of the building, like the housing market collapses, and it's zero percent for a couple of cycles. You know, that year where we go into red moves up six years. But I think for right now, we have a fairly solid model. And all the decisions that we're considering, you can do almost whatever you want, right? You, you have the opportunity now to say, like, you, you can pay it back. Year one, if that's in your interest, do it. If you get five years, that'll make simply me feel more comfortable. In those initial years, because I know I can populate all the reserve accounts if something were to break, a lot of the ones were to plodding. I would feel a lot better about that than being in this position where I'm hoping that the assessment is a couple of percent points higher than. Five in this next year. This year's, we don't know what it's gonna be. We'll know by the end of August. What the accessory believes it's gonna be, and, you know. I don't know, is anybody else? I, I don't know anybody, I've not spoken to anybody whose property values could be built by themselves. So I don't know anyone who has. And so it's possible that twelve point two jumps to twenty. And that seriously changes the outlook in the model. Um, and we'll be looking, we, you know, we don't have to. Think about financing the way that we got there. We can buy it outright. We have a little bit finance ability. The amount we can buy on that, we can fix everything in the under ten.
And concern I have is just getting backlash, you know, popular backlash. I heard says, okay, we're slashing property tax. Rates, yeah. And we'll just have to see what it will be, but I think there's been so much concern about the increase that has here. Another big year increase, didn't surprise me to see something like that. So I, I tend to just let it be, so that it would be that sense of just my sense of.
Yeah, we're gonna have to see how it shapes out this year. I don't think they've ever had that due to the assessment, you know, for one year or two years. So, yeah, but, cause the county is limited, you know. You know, school board, I don't know what that would do, um, so.
And it's not clear, but it has, it's bringing out the anti-tax, which clearly seems to be. All the nothing, look at the language that it's, uh, in the round taper after ten years, and it's like that. Uh, there is a strong, uh, funding for education, which while you may support that in all kinds of ways. They're not really transparent with this plan, and I'm not sure why. So I thi- I think there's gonna be a lot of reasons why people find reasons not quite right. Propositionated change when it comes to Colorado November, from all sides, right? The people who want to support education may want to understand why it's not. I can tell you that rural areas at present, who are smaller and already library districts in rural areas, take this idea. That somehow then they're, they're being capped locally for their taxes and going to be reliant upon the state to back there. That money when they come out of shore. Then there's pressure from their county governments for them to use. And so they're like, why are they taking money away from me by the tax in an area that I have a low revenue? And then I'm socially gonna rely from the state to back there, that difference, like, that just seems counterintuitive to what. The ethos in North Colorado is, and so I don't know what the ethos is gonna be. I don't know if people are gonna.
Already been done massively if there is a role as COVID.
Yeah.
So I don't know what, are you talking about library districts?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, we'll see. So he asked question with staff, um, so this is a master, uh. Personnel master, it goes through position by position. Uh, it's assuming, uh, how many FTV within each. The base salary, and we've done that with the estimate, it calculates, uh, with merit increases. It calculates the formula for the benefits, um, and then I think about that as a question about that. He gets back, so we have already factored, prepared, and everything in our budget currently. Um, but it's not an insignificant amount, the state pay breaks that we contribute fourteen point seven, eight percent of the employee's salary. Uh, manually to their pension, and so we will do that to that, but that's something that we factor in, the city is factoring. Are there any other questions about the model? There's a lot of stuff in here. We have actual budgets versus planned budgets. Um, we're still tracking unknown costs. If they got unknown costs, if you do lock into pair, the night happens one that we did not know about, right? So what's the retirement telling, we lock into pair that eliminates one unknown cost that we can lock into number, which we, uh, you know, play around with. We still don't know healthcare costs, we don't know those for probably, you know, another month or two. Um, once we have that number, we'll lock it into the bottle. I don't think it's gonna be wildly different than what we're projecting. Um, right now, you look at. You know, we're modeling it, it's about twenty percent of the overall salary base. Uh, you take the salary base to the point where I have to, roughly, roughly all the healthcare benefits will cost us. It could be twenty-one, it could be twenty-two. That's not gonna break the model, it's not gonna break the bank. It could cause us to push some things out a little bit. It could impact some of the expenditures that we have planned. It's not a, it's not, in the overall scheme, it's, it's pretty small. Um, I did want to show you where, what kind of, the dashboard is, um. I don't think it's what we want to see yet, but I can show you kind of how we've begun to break out some of this stuff in the graphs. Some, uh, this is the dashboard, it's pretty undeveloped at this point. So there are some that show over the course of time. Cash flow, I mean, this, this one shows salaries and headcount growth. It shows revenue and then the ending balances. Um, there's one here that more mirrors where I started to go, uh, which is. More like what I think the public would want to see in terms of the costs, uh, for the various programs, the library, uh, if you can read this. Um, let me throw it up a little bit, um. So, you know, you can see consulting costs in terms of more administrative services, this is the Carnegie. The collection development budget. Communications and marketing, that's it, kind of those have more than four or five services. Um, this is, you know. The, the benchmarks and the KPIs that I use, um, that we'll talk about when we start doing budgets, like you wanna. You wanna balance out, in the service industry, salaries are gonna amount to. Around in that sixty percentile range, and if you start getting over seventy, I think there's cause for us to start asking questions. The model that we've shown you through twenty thirty-nine does not factor under sixty in the initial year, but that's partly because of ramping up staffing to meet our budget. Um, you know, the collection cost, now you want to spend on purchasing and cycling through books. I mean, my sense is, that's what a lot of people come here for. We want to make sure that that number is up at a reasonable level. Fifteen percent is a good starting point, uh, but you could see, like, a lot of our front range libraries are below cap as well. So, you know, I think every amount that we put in there makes a difference. I mean, we have, I have data going back years and years, you can tell, like. The amount of money we spend on new books, and dramatically affects your circulation, affects your door count, they all. It all is correlated, and so that's a number that we will watch pretty carefully. Um, where we are hurting a little bit, and this does not factor in all the capital expenditures. Um, this facility's maintenance cost, that's just, that's nothing to do with any of the capital expenditures at this point. This is all just annual maintenance, uh, worth fifteen percent. So all the things we're talking about, yes, the backlog, that's such many dollars on there. Add another, um, few percentage points, uh, buying of building in Meadows or down there on Texas. And so that number is a little high for us, and I should expect it will remain so until we're actually able to address a lot of this capital needs around the backup, which is about.
So on the dashboard, um, I mean, I think visual representation of data like this is helpful. Um, for some people. I hope that we're gonna look at something that's more like, what would you do for the annual report? You know, something that actually maybe has pictures and, you know, relates for people in a very simplified way. Here's books and news that we spend, here's, you know, for, this, the city's dashboard, I'm not sure if it's any. Pretty different with the old spreadsheets or not. If you really want to dive into things, it's, you know, by, for, through. Um, and these bar charts and diagrams. It's really hard to try and really analyze something with comparisons. Um, so I think we need to think about this, and I think we already are, is. There's a, there's a beautiful, for, after the board. And the people who are budgeting much, maybe some of the board, the thing for the general public, can we just make this simple? You know, this is how much we spend in these kinds of things, or these kinds of things, just to make it easy so that people. Don't feel so intimidated, um, which I think a lot of people do. I mean, that's just me. I'm always just so burnt out, I think city budgets, that I don't regret.
No, I agree with Johnny, and I think there's one, there's one place that I'm just a normal watching, you know, I just. So I think you're actually winning pictures, and so what? In my past life, running the district, previous past lives, um. The, the most common question is people want, they come up with this, like, how much do you spend on my branch? And that's not something we do. So we can attempt to track it in terms of staffing and non-personal expenses. For going to this building, but because of the fact that communications, the substitute. All of the collection, which is the most size, the IT budget are not broken out per location. It shows kind of a false representation of that policy action. And so what they get is a smash over, like, it's almost like the city's budget showing what it cost to run. It shows none of the, uh, other costs that are actually keeping it running. And so that's one that I've been trying to live through, because I. Suspect that you're gonna get that question and then move on, bringing the next score. How much do you cost around my branch? And I don't have an easy way of thinking at this point. We could, we could break it up by percentage, but we're just talking about a lot of labor, right? We start breaking out every single internal cost, percentage-wise, by location, visitors, by size of the building. And that which is gonna bring the cost of maintenance down to this relationship to size.
And that's not how I engage with our libraries, or by, I mean, I guess I, maybe I'm an odd person, because I go to all the branches. I mean, I guess I am the north polar one in my head, like, um, you know, I have a meeting here, I have a meeting there. So I, I go pick up books here, get the poster to my house, you know, so I guess, um, you know, I guess. I don't know if folks engage that way, but I don't think that's what Johnny was talking about. I, I think it's more just like. A simplified, you know. Or, and I think people can come to the board, the dependence and all this stuff, like, like. You really want to get down to the nitty-gritty, or meet with Jennifer or David, and, you know, look at. I mean, I'm totally, you know, transparent on what these things are, so.
No, and I think it's probably the metrics that we use, right? So it took a lot, when I got here, we were spending less than ten dollars, of course, in the whole country. That, that seemed to be, it was like dramatically too low. We shifted it in the first two or three years, we got the voting. We landed somewhere like eleven dollars and forty-three cents, right? So, and we stayed there, run the Republican system, we, like their best fighters this year. Well, guess what? In, uh, twenty twenty-four, our population grows by twenty-seven thousand. Guess how we arrived at the amount of money? We, we took the money, money that we currently expend per capita when we're sitting in a boulder, and applied to the larger population, that's where we went. Right, so we wind up spending on every single person outside, and I think that's a good fact. So we showed that we're spending, like, twelve, eleven dollars and forty-three cents on every single person in the nation, and then different on clutch. Uh, that, that I think is a decent way of displaying information, because, oh, that's genius. That's the thing we are using to.
Right.
And the master plan calls out, you know, to, between ninety and forty-five percent. So we will attempt to have a different.
And I think the metrics are helpful, so I mean, I'm just seeing as I'm listening to, and the students, we have, so you know, it's just like a diagram, it says, okay, here's the base platform. In this, you have IT and collections, and, you know, that's this amount, and then here's the branches coming off of it. You know, just something that's a very simple way for people to understand the people and the stocks. And the values and where the money goes, and we give a very binary way. Eighty percent of the people will not go far with it. I'm convinced of that.
Yeah, it's all the talent at the school that's like, they simplify, but maybe there are, there is a library district that has. Put out a thing that we could model, I don't know if you've come across these, or you, 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 you know, like, let's start collecting them. And see what we like, that we think is intimidating, right? You know what I'm saying? Like, add a card or an, very, invite an annual report.
Can I ask a, could, could I ask a question? Um, I'm so sorry, I'm not there today, because the audio is like a little bit fuzzy, but, um. Can I just ask what the, like, immediate next steps are for, for the Budget and Finance Subcommittee? Cause I understand a couple of things. One, Johnny, and Benita, you'd like a sensitivity analysis around. The different years of payback periods, um, so that you can go to the IGA negotiations with a, an understanding of what. A three, four, five-year payback period would look like and have, be armed with that. I feel like that's one takeaway for me is. Creating something that is a little bit less involved and in the weeds than this, as this model. And have something more like David's simple model to go into the negotiations with around the impact of having different period, periods for payback. The second one I hear is figuring out how we want to present this information to the public. And then maybe the third one, I, I heard you say, Johnny, you wanted the budget subcommittee to come back with a recommendation about something, but I didn't hear. What the thing was, was it one of those things?
Yeah, it was about the reserve percentage, Jen, Denver.
Oh, reserve percentage, okay, okay.
And Jen, I know that we need more of a sensitivity analysis than what David has done, so now.
Okay, okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, this conversation tonight, before we had our IGA discussion, um, I, I, what are people might like more than, I, I'm certainly happy with what we got.
Okay, okay.
If I summarize the, the kind of message, I think, the kind to base, but is that. Our assumptions are coming out to be pretty close, or, you know, in most of the areas of, of the budget. Um, and that, um, you know, we're looking pretty good. You know, going into the IGA discussions about, you know, our budget and that kind of stuff, so I think, you know. That is my take away from it, very high level, I guess, I guess, I mean, these are, these are hard to. Numbers to wrap around, it's a lot of numbers, you know, and, um, but yeah, I think, uh, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so a couple of things, one, just going back to David and your point on the spend per. Person in population or per library part holder? So whether they're coming in library or not, or of age, or being a.
It's a, it's a standard metric with libraries track, so we turn in, I mean, it's a number that I track, not just another libraries by our own. I look at modern libraries throughout the country, this is what ours, I mean, you can tell a lot of the, we're trying to determine. What the canary of the coal mine is with libraries, so some things don't matter, how many magazines did you buy? We turn that number into a section, it has no relevance, it doesn't correlate with any, um, there are some numbers that we generate. That correlates to increase visitors, increased circulation, and that's come through, you know, twenty years of our library.
But to, to follow up on that, if I can, I mean, during the pandemic, we had a lot of discussion, you know, previously. The price, the, the cost per population was a very misleading number, because it was based on city availability boundaries. And the service touching area was like thirty percent.
Yeah.
So now that we have the district protection, we think more like, maybe five percent, it takes a minute, something like that. Yeah, so it's at least a little better information, and we've got such high penetration.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the thing is kind of.
So, does any of the C U students do?
Yeah, and there, there are high, uh, I think, but if we ever go back to extract it, but, yeah, you can kind of see the, uh. You can kind of see, see you in our numbers of new card. And so we technically get in the back, somewhere between sixty and seventy thousand new libraries in there. And that's not turnover in Boulder or new people that we found, it's probably driven by now by some new students. And then we also see, you know, roughly the same number of drop off, because they haven't used their card in three years or two years, they're like, they are using. Again, probably sees, um, so they, they have, that, that confused me when I posted it to her. The cold crap, 'cause that's sort of the canary of the coal mine, why are we getting new libraries? And indeed, both of the library does, it's such a high rate that it's, it's improbable, you think of. Popularity turnover is, you know, whatever it is, five, six percent, and then you get like whatever, I think we have something like. Remember now, it's like thirteen thousand new libraries, and roughly thirteen thousand, twelve, thirteen thousand. It's, I think that's primarily driven by this, 'cause it's out of whack with any other library, and, and a lot in a community that's not growing. At a profound degree, it's just an anomaly, and so, yeah, they're signing up, they're used to trends that you don't track. I don't want, I don't, I don't really use library, you know, I come in to get library birds.
So my next question just had to do with, like, representing the district's budget, and I wondered about. Um, having some cool graphic that shows what it looks like under the suit. Like, just the graphic of, like, how much money was spent on library, and how it responds respects, so that people could see. Some comparison to where we're going, and we can represent, you know, where we're going.
I don't think that, I, I don't think, I don't think. Yeah.
But I just think it's public information, I think it helps people be educated or informed, uh. What the district gives, and what the difference is, and property tax versus sales tax, and, you know, general fund, I.
Yeah, no, it's great, I mean, I can, I can see it in my head, right, okay, we definitely have to, at in several areas, staffing costs. Obviously go up because we're expanding that, certainly, you're like, the budget for materials goes up chunk. You know, and that's because of, and then.
Or branch hours.
Branch hours, yeah, that could, that won't change our staffing over the dramatic, but the, um, the amount of money that's going into main, main facilities. Uh, will be shocking in that regard, and that's why I want to do this.
I don't think.
We'll see what, we'll see what, we'll show them what it looks like, we'll show you what's up.
Because it's also representing the IGA, just sort of in a different way, right?
Yeah. And, 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 nothing like, for example, if you're familiar with, just, you're gonna be some people that, they want to be able to see the library just delivering. You know, and then for staffing, I hope you can relate that somehow, what staff is delivering, because, you know, it's not just people. It's people here, and I just to be out there, or, or with, or in the dorm room, or something like that, and. It's all about who would finish the modern life, you know?
Yeah.
And, yeah.
A lot better, a lot better than, than, I'm just saying, actually, like, this picture, there's. Come back to a much better financial model, like, what do you live in? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I just, yeah, you know.
Well, this has been really helpful, thank you, does anybody have any other comments or questions about the financial model, or is this piece of it, you know? I think you said it's like ninety nine or something, is that just because you don't have known figures of some of this?
Yeah, we don't, we, we didn't, there are, there are some minor things that we don't know, so far, so far so good. But so, like, with the HRAS system, which I thought we were going to about last week, uh, we're not talking about it, my report. Like, the bids that we're getting are coming in significantly less than what we projected, and so that's good. Um, there may be others that come in later, so they're behind projected, I think in annual results, like direct expenses for like this year. I, I think we'll be under that one and a half billion, but we'll see, that, that was the amount we started with, and right now, I'm not changing that number, like, it's, but so far so good. We got a lot more out of the facility study coming to, than I thought I was gonna get for thirty six thousand dollars, like, a lot more. And that is extraordinarily useful document for us, um, and made brilliant, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on something else. Which wouldn't, it would not be as useful, honestly, so I, um, that is, I really appreciate the fact that we jumped on that. And it's good news, um, yeah, so so far, so far really good, man, um.
So that report, will we see that?
Other kinds of part. So only one, of all you.
Yeah.
And we can, we can. And it's a nice.
I mean, I think I'll just issue it.
Yeah, 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 I thought we were getting here at some point. I thought you already got it. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, we were gonna, we didn't want to ruin our subcommittee report.
Just a goner, right?
I have a couple of questions, um, and they're hoping to send a new lead to Sam, and, um, probably needs to answer some of those questions. We're waiting that we're asked, but we can certainly send the, the fortune, we can wait until we've been done, and we might, we might find out, until we get them.
And I, definitely, I, I thought you already thanked, so, yeah.
It's something glorified, home inspection, but it's a hundred thirty six page, and, and honestly, I. It's easily readable, I, I mean, it's, I would like, if we like, you want it now, it's, it's kind, it's, it actually. It's pretty big, and the work that you guys are gonna be doing over the next five or six years. Building is a big part of it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so today is fine, mine or tomorrow, whatever. I'm, I'm not.
Jen, do you have anything else? I know that we're gonna be as excited as you are.
Do you have any other questions about the financial model?
No, I, I'm gonna need David to walk me through, he, he sent it around earlier today, I, I'm having a little trouble using it. Um, but, so we'll, we can do that in subcommittee, but, but, yeah, no, no, no other questions for the.
Okay. So, you want to move on to the current resolution? I think that's, that's stuff.
Yeah, very much. So, um, this one, I mean, I think we all had questions about. The retirement system, um, I think, I don't wanna speak for Sylvia, or, actually, for. For Jen and Sam, but that, the one question, the big question we had about para was resolved in the survey, when ninety four. Plus percent of the staff said that it was a top priority that we continue the para. And so, um, tonight you have a resolution in front of you, uh, which is a requirement for me to begin the conversations with para. About becoming a new affiliate, um, I, I, uh, I think you'll wait to see if the. Personnel subcommittee has written other recommendations around retirement savings and 401Ks, and whether they're gonna match, and all the other kind of thing. Um, but for now, the staff, uh, we're very clear about para. Um, Doug, you had a question about the cost implications of that, so that is factored into the model, we, and, right, it's less, it's less stated. Legislation has set the number of company in fourteen point seven eight percent of the employee's salary, uh, it's contributed. To para, by new holder, and so that is built into the model, and, uh, what we were doing last year. What we're doing, what the city is doing this year, and what the district is doing this year, so it's not, it doesn't come as a surprise to, to, to mistake with the resolution. You lock it in that you are willing to become a new affiliate, I can then begin, you know, a detailed conversation with para about what that actually means. Uh, and you should be on my, for example.
I just wanted to make sure, are we, with this resolution. Entering into a para, or we're just starting the conversation, will there be another resolution, will we, or, where we authorize? An adoption of some agreement with para, or?
Yeah, we have to get to the point where we actually sign off the order, you have to.
Okay.
Express, you have to express the intent that you wanna become an affiliate, for me to begin that work with them, they're a big stadium agency. Uh, and.
Got it.
And hopefully.
I just wanna make sure, 'cause I just wanna like, I just wanna understand what we're actually doing.
Well, you are, you are in a sense, initiating the process, which has budget.
Okay.
So those current budget differences, so right now, twenty three, twenty twenty three, the library's, uh, employees share there. Is right around nine hundred thousand dollars, they're over thirteen, fifteen million dollars. Um, you know, add thirty, thirty percent, the staff with thirty three percent, will be one point million dollars. You know, that eighteen million dollars that we saw there about first year, right, one point three million. Or the, or the, actually, we have a piece of, and it's very simple. There's not a, there are, the fairness is say, like, you can do this for some of your employees, not whoever's, it's all in the, it's a super. Fifteen percent, I think that's, they only make all employees retire. Um, should you choose to do something additional to that, that's.
Possibly, good, Johnny?
And then it's given, there's two cars that aren't staffed, and they're over there, and it was concerned, it's like, we definitely said, is anybody here? I wanna go out and move it now, 'cause the water level is just to the bottom of the car.
Yeah, so it, it gets really, once, once, if it rains very much, we can, uh, skip rocks, I mean, we can put.
Yeah. Let's just take a break here, and do some calm things, and I will send you the episode, if you want to.
I just wanna see, like, the water.
It's a disaster, I mean, it doesn't look bad, yeah, I mean, it gets.
I think I've been here when you got.
Probably can't leave that.
Yeah, we doesn't just, in each part of my. So everyone's brought out, the, this, this, that, and the other, especially, we can get some sort of, you know, some of that. You get it, not, yeah, I'm good, I'm good. The ones that smells at the back when they were doing here, and there were some of these, then it gets very, very. I think it's, you know, please, it's possible, it could, it's, it's.
A lot of the bathroom.
Yeah. Well, doors have to be shut when you close the buildings.
Oh, no, 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 we want the not, yeah.
Really mad when I open emails after hours, and then I start going, oh, I should, and this, and that, and that, and, oh, I should read about that, yeah, I'm just, I'm just. Stop me.
And then in the morning, and you look at the.
Oh, there, yeah, yeah. Have to play the Nebraska tomorrow, and then on Thursday, I'm presenting to the tribal council. Also, I should be sitting in your world on Thursday, you know, attending board meeting, but, I hope it's fine. Oh, of course, yeah, of, of course.
Executive session.
Uh-huh. Whenever they, whenever they want you, that's where my call, it's usually not when they, and, but.
Yeah, it's like, it'll be right in the going, it's like.
Of course it will, of course it will.
Where are you going in Nebraska?
Um, so I'm going to Omaha, and I'm driving up to the checkpoint, going to Bay Harbor, which is like, just across the border, like, right near Iowa. And I'm saying that he's sitting there, so, yeah, uh, but I'll be working then, on my, when I'm gonna go.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm guessing you have a lot of those, like, long drives and.
Yeah, mostly on the, yeah, 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 and then, uh, two weeks from now, I have to go to France with Kuda. And, uh, I think it will be the same.
Yeah.
Lots of.
I've worked with, one of those tribes, like, one of those nations up there, um, a little bit on, in North Dakota. They have like, uh, equipment, we had to get, uh, like, driver permits. It'll be all on, and, uh, oh, and also, we use some measurement devices. That have, um, a very small, um. Uh, gamma emitting source, it's like, um, kind of like, like, even less than like what you get, but like, they, they sometimes have to be a thing. And so, just permitting them, you know, on different preparation, so. And the state of North Dakota, we're like, well, who's, who, who's, um, who runs this stuff? And, and, and they're like, we don't wanna touch it, the federal government, you know? And the state, they still have their own rules, and the federal. Cause the state, the federal has their own rules and the federal government has their own rules. Trying to figure out, you had to get like an informal opinion.
Yeah.
From them, like, and they wouldn't touch anything like that. Yeah, right. Well, it's much easier, the federal rules were much easier.
Okay, yeah, that's.
All right, back.
We're all ready for this, Ben? And so we're in the discussion of the para resolution.
Yes, the resolution is to become a new affiliate that you're, you're showing. Yeah.
Well, okay, so um I just wanna make sure, cause I, I was thinking what Doug was about the cost part. And so when I look at the resolution, um so on the second page, where it talks about, um you know, um. I, I authorized to perform an act to approve two affiliates then. And then in three, it says sufficient funds required for purchasing shall be appropriated in the twenty twenty-four budget. And then if I look at the certification, it does, it's something for approving. For approving this cost, is that?
You're, you're approving me of the issue. So if you're going to, to, to go into para in twenty twenty-four. You'll have to affect the twenty twenty-three. So you're just on, we're doing your couple of, doesn't mean it's banned.
Okay. All right. But I mean, my.
Yeah, and in future years, this will probably be.
Okay.
As a new affiliate. I need all the time that para I can get.
Yeah.
So I asked, I asked him. I need just tonight, which is awesome.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I talked to him today, but it's gonna take some time, because this just really initiates.
Okay.
We'll come back. That we gotta, or you gotta sign and somebody, and that will then commit us to. Uh will this commit us to para, or is there gonna be another, just like, I'm just, I'm still not clear. Does it commit us to para or um is there gonna be another decision where we say, okay, you negotiated everything or whatever, got it all wind up. Sign it, or is this thing?
This is committing you to para twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Uh as requested by the staff and your settlement.
Okay.
Should you choose to supplement the return in another way.
Okay.
Beyond the fifteen percent for what we should have been in para, that's obviously a decision. That you all can bring out, that I would assume recover from the full board or through the personnel thing. And we can run a finance and using that and things like that. If you have to put matching that all okay.
Yeah.
HSA matches or anything like that, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not doing any of that. Just, for me, this locks in retirement.
Right, okay. Sam, where you guys, I've given you resources, so this is the most important thing that got out and I've seen no. No way forward other than to start the conversation, ask the rest. Good, okay.
Jan, you trying to say something?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of thoughts. One is, um. Do we, do we think it is okay or wise to proceed with this before we secure our benefits broker? Just in terms of, I mean, I know you've made them all aware, this is the number one item, David. Does it make sense to have them to be, you know, partner selected and partnered so that they can either support? The affiliation or advise us about how to pair things? The second one is, the second point, question I had was. How we would plan to message this to staff and it seems to me we wanna be pretty careful about. Trickling out things about benefits, cause this is obviously gonna be public record, it's a motion and so on. So people are like, oh, okay, para, we got it. Great. You know, like, is there, do we wanna be pretty deliberate about? What we're saying we're doing right now and why? And how it fits in with the comprehensive plan, so it doesn't seem like we're doing things in a kind of piecemeal reactive way, but in a sort of intentional. You know, sort of step by step. Like this is intentional on our part in terms of how we're timing and so on. So those are kind of two different questions.
Yeah, so as to the second one, I think that's something for the board to discuss. For me, no, I see no. Reason to wait, because I think the more they see that you're responding to what they said in the survey, I think that's beneficial. Um but you could obviously decide to wait until you see a full, full benefits package, which probably isn't another four. Or five weeks, right? So a full benefits package, a draft of a full benefits package would probably be something that you'll be looking at in five weeks. You won't be approving it. Uh you'll be uh saying that the draft is fine to go forward, gather feedback from this. And your first question was, what again?
Role of benefits broker.
Uh you know, all the benefits brokers know that we were leaning in this direction and that we're not looking at them to, for anything other than supplemental. So they, the, the likelihood of, I mean, but that's not finalized. They, they, they're also, I think, a couple of them are aware that. You would consider a resolution, become a para affiliate. Uh I think they probably will become prepared with. Offering other forms of supplemental retirement. And from my vantage point, I think we should look at them. Not that we're necessarily gonna match them, but that we make them available to staff to put money into, because. Para also offers, the city offers para, and then they offer a 401K through para and a 457 through para. Plus they offer a 401K with a 457, we're gonna put it work. So I mean, probably even more recently, simply. Um because the para 401Ks.
Yeah, I, I wasn't just, I, I see the upside of messaging that we voted to do this tonight. This time, with this timing, I'm just trying to think about if there's any downside or potential up. Additional upside to waiting to release like everything together as a draft. With para having a strong weight behind it or, or something like that. I, uh just to, just in terms of thinking about like. More like internal communication strategies, where really rather than like. Whether or not we're gonna do this, it seems like people are pretty resolute on that. I don't know, is there any downside to waiting? I guess.
And I think, I, I don't think we have the option of asking tonight and not releasing the information.
Right, of course, right.
Document. Um and, and I think what David has asked is that he needs as much time to work with para as possible. So I don't really see another option here. I mean, I think we know we're gonna have para, staff knows we're gonna have para. I don't see a downside to it. I do see a downside to waiting a month. Um and then possibly running into a delay and trying to deliver a benefits package. So that's, I mean, that's my thought. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, one of the bigger concerns that David has articulated all along is, is. Para is a big bureaucracy, how long, how difficult is this gonna be? It may be way easier than we initially thought, but I think. The downside of waiting um outweighs, you know, acting tonight.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just because David has continually said it's been a lot easier than I thought, like the last three weeks, I thought. I thought it was bringing up.
I don't, I, I still think.
Well, I think. You know, five weeks or six weeks will have a. Full of benefits package. Then maybe, you know, we know that this para thing will actually be in, you know. Full resolution by January first or whatever. So I think that would give us a little more confidence in the package that we're gonna offer. You know, so I, 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 I can see the, I mean. The downside would be, I guess, you know. I don't know. What the downside would be.
I guess for me, the downside is like seeming a little bit like things are just. Not, they're a little bit disjointed, like there's not, like, you know, we're, we're in para, which is this like totally. It's, it's important to everybody, but it's just like one benefit out of many that we're gonna offer. We're voting on that today. And then we're gonna do a benefit. It's, to me, it seems like a little. Not all over the place, but like, I understand the rationale for it. And Sam, thank you for, you know, mentioning like, it is true of this giant bureaucracy. I know David, you're concerned about it. Um I, I just wanna seem like we're being really intentional and thoughtful about how we're. Moving about things. And so if we have in the messaging, like, we understand this is really important to you and there's a giant bureaucracy. So we've engaged this. Process a bit sooner than the other benefits we're gonna release, or just being intentional about how we talk about it. Like, I think that's as important as doing the thing. To me. I want to seem intentional. So that's my. That's my thing, that's my thing.
Okay, and so like really, and so again, like, yeah, but I, I wanna, I wanna lock it on them, okay? My impulse, my, my impulse is to lock everything down as soon as I can. So if you feel the need to wait, I think that's fine. Um because I, like now, I, I'm, I'm crossing this off my list and what I want to do, right? So that is my, I wanna cross off my list. This locks in basically six percent of your budget in twenty twenty-four. I need to lock in healthcare costs next, which is probably gonna be between ten and fourteen percent of your budget next year. I, I just, I wanna get those things to the point where we can say like, yes, this is it. And this is the way to do it. That was gonna take more time. Uh but just initially the process. And there will be a time in the budget when you actually really appropriately on the money. The first civilization, you know, I've been blocking in, I mean. Blocking on, you know, the intent to appropriate. It's funny, we're not appropriating the money tonight, but you will do so in part.
But I think for me, para is a little bit different than some of the other employee benefits, because para, it's always been a yes, no decision. You know, are we gonna stick with para? Or are we gonna do something else? And when you hear ninety-four percent wanna stick with para, okay, we're sticking with para. It's not like health, when you have. Different packages we're checking. Um so I think for me, maybe that's part of the intentional. Conversation, and I hear what you're saying, you know, the para is important. Um the, the coaching staff is critical, so they're gonna pin this down and move on, and then look at what the rest of the benefits package is that goes along with them. Which may include sufficiency, child, you don't know. But I think, can you understand? Just makes sense because it's such a credit to staff. So are we, are we ready to move on the resolution? My one for adoption. Your resolution number thirty twenty-five, you know, is it in twenty twenty-three, oh, eight, oh, one? For a second. All those in favor? I, I. Uh Jan, are you voting on it?
Yeah, I'll vote. I, I just, with the caveat that we communicate with some transparency why we're pursuing it sooner than the other benefits.
Okay, we wanna talk about the family uh locked out tonight.
You don't need to, I only put that in there because we need to do it at some point in time. We have to have thirty days to have a hearing. So that really doesn't have to happen in November.
Okay.
Well, and there will be a lot of, a lot of the information, when you set that, then you'll put together the notices. And the notices will have all the information about the cost, the benefits and all that, although some of it's in what I put in.
Yeah, you've got a lot to do, you know, actually, I guess. Great. Okay, um subcommittee updates, can we be telling the specifics, which is kind of already done? Oh, sorry.
Just real, real quickly, so the, the. The benefits broker request for proposals closes on. The personnel subcommittee will review those with the next week. Uh initially, and hopefully have somebody come back to for that innovation. Uh the same. The HRIS, I think, a week or two ago, I told you that what the, you know, I was not interested in keeping them with us. We interviewed, we contacted four companies. And talked to all of them, we interviewed forty-three and gone through multiple demos with each. We've married it to two, we're checking the references, we're gonna bring something back to you.
We, we hired the IT consultants.
He will be here next.
Okay.
So the IT consultant will, next, next week is the IT, city of IT departments, president, chief.
Okay.
I believe of the recommendation, so what they wanna do. Uh your IT consultant has some questions, so you should follow him to that. Uh but in line with, I think probably with their plan. Uh but they, he will be here as well as a couple of others next week in this building. Um to go over IT proposals for our, the couple, and then you have enough to ask the city questions. I assume you're a consultant, and whoever else you want, we also get to ask some questions. The plan for that is that. The following week, two weeks, August twenty-second, you will have an RFP ready to go. Uh for an IT consultant to come in and manage the uh migration transition. Uh that, that, that's, it's not finally, I mean, I, that's my, I think we'll be. Will the RFP, will you review the RFP prior to sending it out? We will probably do it somewhere, but we will send it out to select companies that we're getting. Adequate.
And that is also, IT is also something in the government, I know, you know, costs, drive and show you here, what seems proposing and how. The RFP is entering, I remember that.
Yes, we, we, we have a placeholder here. Now, we have a placeholder for all the costs. Uh including everything from security cameras to rebuying all the, so we have a placeholder in the budget currently. Um we don't know what the cost for actually.
And is there anything from that that builds over into the O D O?
Well, I won't know until next week. I, I think they're gonna have a mild presentation on how to decouple the network. Uh we've kind of priced out somewhat, I think, but incompletely the cost of actually. Building out our network services, but I, I certainly haven't seen any in compliance. So if that's the recommendation. We're gonna come and remove all the fiber hubs. We have to rebuild how we get fiber from the city, right? That's not another. You know, some of the infrastructure, it's, you know, it's considering, maybe, the wire and stuffs. I mean, stuff like that, I don't know, you know, what the city plan and everything. I can understand the city's desire to have all the crews back. It truly can, because they, it seems like a waste, because some of the dealers are moving. Most of them are not, they're towards the end of life. They want them back because of all the image, the city of all their stuff, and they're just factoring in the cost of, so I can even know clearly. When we're dealing with us dying, we have to unload all of the re-imagining that's a mystery. You know, it's not easy to buy. Yeah, so I don't think that's a major glitch for us. But, you know, the hardware in the buildings, servers and the fonts and stuff, one of us, honest class. If they want all that stuff back too, I don't know what they want to do.
Subcommittee matters, reports?
I can talk about, there was. Too bad to talk about, but it, it is like a very large home inspection report. And when you get into it, it's kind of easy to read the first two brave. Yeah, you know, two or three pages break it down by immediate, the short term and long term. So based on cost, so I think you'll find that to be um. Pretty helpful. Um and then. And then there's just lots of pictures of, you know, facility, you know, stuff that, and I think it's gonna be a really nice document to take. And build um a whole kind of five, six year, ten year plan on facilities. Everyone needs to be fixed and not fixed and. And, and put some certainty around, you know, what the actual sort of. Building liability. And I think it's also a good, because, you know, if, if we do take these buildings, we're not taking them by, like, brand new, perfect, and so. It definitely has some question. But, but overall. But, but overall, I think he rated them pretty well. Obviously not the Carnegie, but the other buildings, the main ones look pretty. You know, the mechanical systems were pretty good and the envelopes. Did use more.
I just, I just double check for that for my team. So the HGA currently was what we. Says the library district will engage consultant to determine a process for separating the information systems. City and the district will cooperate to develop a future governmental agreement with a detailed transition plan. For technology services to be included within five years of the day of the. So right now you're like a agreement to fully agree on how to do it. So, you know, the cost going out of the. So we're saying it's up to. All right, any questions? Okay. Well, then. Let's defer on the legal counsel report. So Kim has a longstanding obligation in the middle of the library district, which he just stepped out to take care of. And I would say, well, if you're going to have a meeting to do in the recession and you can start inspecting. So. Let's see. The notion, yes.
I just wanted to interject really quickly. This is Marissa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Amazing. Um, do you have a recording device? All executive sessions have to be recorded live stating the statutory purpose. For the exception at the beginning of the recording. So I think if you're going to enter executive session without Kim. Who has a recording device, you should wait for him.
So Kelly has a recording device and Kim.
Amazing.
Will be the one handling that for us.
Lovely, perfect.
And should we dial you in on a phone, Jen? How do you want to participate in this?
We just stopped recording.
Oh, you can just stop recording.
And David has moved off the meeting, so we don't have access to.
I can hear, I can hear you.
Okay, so it's now eight thirty one. And we have ended our executive session and have moved back into the public meeting. Is there any?
Jen, are you coming to the staffing subcommittee tomorrow morning?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, cool.
I got a lot of books to return, so.
Okay, is there anything else for the good leader?
I have a question about Kim, the five and a half percent violation thing in your status report. Can you explain that a little better?
Yeah, so the county got a letter from the state saying that the district has been in violation of its 5.5% increase limitation. So like Tabor, there's a statute that says in succeeding years, you can't get more than 5.5% more of your previous, than your previous year's revenues. Our previous year's revenues were zero. This year it's $17 million. So we blew it out of the water. The problem is the county went to DOLA and they opened up an account for the library district. But they didn't file the paperwork that the state needs. Now we can't find anybody in the county that has the, the access code for DOLA. So we're trying to figure, we're trying to get DOLA to give us a new access code to the library district's account. We'll get the paperwork done and then straighten it out with DOLA. This is not, this was, is different than normal, but it's not unusual for us to get these letters. They send them out quickly without doing their research and frankly, not very concerned about it, but.
Okay.
Have to get that secret code first.
Thanks for explaining that. Thank you.
All right, are we adjourned? All right, George, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.